We are here for the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee meeting. It is Monday, February 18th, 2019. It's about 5:33. And let's take attendance. Mrs. Porter is here. Mrs. Timmons.
Here.
Mrs. Ohensy.
Here.
Mrs. Oden is not here. And we have Mr. Kaufman. And Dr. McKinney. All right. Okay. We have an excellent, excellent agenda for tonight. I'm very excited. As we've been, well, it's only the second meeting that I've done, but I like to have somebody from the schools come and kind of share the exciting and wonderful things that are happening in our schools. So we're very thrilled today to welcome our New Hampshire Kid Governor, Lola Giannelli. She is in the 5th grade at Sunset Heights. We have her teacher, Mrs. Foreman. And we also have Luann Janest, who is the state coordinator for New Hampshire Kid Governor. So here we come. All right. And Mrs. Janest is, we are lucky to have her as our teacher. She's one of our own from Nashua. Longtime wonderful teacher. And yes, and we won't go any further than that. So as the state coordinator of New Hampshire Kid Governor, would you like to give us just a brief overview of the program?
Sure. So in June of last year, Susan and I attended a workshop at St. Anselm College on different ways to bring civics into the classroom. And we had a presentation from Brian Confrancesco, who is the coordinator of the Connecticut Kid Governor Program. So we decided that we would give it a shot in Nashua. So when the program kicked off, the president of the New Hampshire Institute for Civics Education asked me if I would coordinate it for the state. So we brought it to Nashua.
Okay. And how did that develop into Lola's campaign?
So we started with seven lessons that we did across our school and in all the schools that participated in Nashua. And each child that was interested in running developed a platform. And I'll let Lola talk about hers. But she ended up being the winner for our school after we had a school-wide election. And one of the most amazing things that I saw was how the kids came together to work as a team to support her. And even it was across the grade level. It wasn't just from my class. So we had to really quickly, in like a five-day turnaround, put a video together that we could submit that could be seen by all the participating 5th graders across the state. And then we went to St. A's to vote, to watch those videos and actually vote for our kid governor and then a mock election for the senator. Yeah, governor, sorry.
Yeah. I think that one of the most important things that we, that the kids take, that we took as teachers and the kids can take away from this is that children do have a voice and can make such a difference in the community. And it really does encourage civic engagement. The students learn about the branches of government in New Hampshire. They learn about developing an interest in the community and coming up with a way that they can be active in the community. And they learn about voting rights. There's a lot of language arts involved where they analyze videos. They do research on their platform. So it is truly an interdisciplinary program. I'll let Lola talk about her campaign.
Okay. Okay. So tell us about how you decided on what to do for your campaign and what your platform would be.
Well, I decided I want my platform would be by really thinking about animal cruelty. And I thought that animal cruelty was wrong and that I could make a difference by giving animals a voice.
And I noticed in your, on the website, that you had three specific ideas of three really concrete things you can do to help to end animal cruelty. Do you remember what those are?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I remember that I want to have a law that you can't sell, well, the people in the...
Pet stores.
Pet stores, yeah. And the pet stores can't sell any dogs, rabbits, or cats unless they come from a nonprofit organization or shelter. And also, I wanted to have a dog toy club after school where I teach everyone how to make three kind of basic ideas and then they can get creative as long as it's not too small so that they don't choke. And then my last idea was that I was going to have food and blanket drives at local businesses.
Excellent. I have to back up a little bit. What made you decide to run in the first place? Do you remember?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I remember that I was very shy. And I thought when I came home with the paper and told my mom about it, that I could like boost my confidence and make me not as shy, which has been helping.
I'm very impressed. You're doing a great job, public speaking, right now. It's a little scary, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Lola has already been interviewed by NHPR. She was on I for Education. She is, what is her next event? Oh, she's going to be recognized by the Board of Alderman at a March meeting. And she has a desk at Mayor Dauntless's office. And she is going to become an ambassador for us. She's going to begin this year. She's going to make a tour of some of the elementary schools in Nashua and speak to the 4th graders about how they can get involved. And then this summer, she'll be working with her other two executive council members to bring awareness to her cause as well as to the other two, the other two children and their causes are poverty and school waste, lunch waste. She's already worked on Evelyn's Cause. She and her family volunteered to end 68 hours of hunger. And she collected, she bagged food for them. But she also collects all the cardboard and brings it to the Humane Society for kittens.
Wonderful. And I forgot to mention, your wonderful family is here with you. Thank you for coming. We're really happy to have you here. Thank you for all the work you put in to help her to do this. It's a great achievement. All right. Do we have any board member comments or questions? Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Ms. Lola. That's wonderful, all the things that you do, that community work. I'm so involved in the community myself. So it's really inspiring to me to see someone so young and so dedicated to the community. And that's fantastic. I do have a question, and I'm sure you can answer it. You said that you do food and blankets. Is that for pets or is it for people?
It's for pets, as far as I'm aware.
Okay. That's the only question I have. But you've done, that's a fantastic job you've done.
Excellent.
I'm really impressed. And parents, congratulations for a wonderful daughter.
Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. Congratulations. It's a very great honor in the 5th grade. You've got a few more grades, seven more grades. Let's see what you can do. I have one question. My kids bred baby birds and hand-fed them and sold them to pet stores. Would that be banned under your new bill? And why wouldn't you want kids to learn about breeding and genetics? And that was just my question.
That is a very good question.
Think about it. No rush. Next week, whatever, just...
Think about why is it that you thought, what is the problem with puppies?
Oh.
Why don't you tell why you came up with that?
Yeah, because there were puppy mills. And I wanted to make the puppy mills go out of business so that they don't do anything bad to the animals. But I think technically, if you gave the birds, like you said, like a good home for a small amount of time and then gave them to a shelter, I think that would be okay as long as you didn't bring them to a puppy mill or something.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Lola, terrific. I really appreciate your initiative.
Thank you.
You know, starting up, starting with an idea and creating a whole effort behind it. And I'll tell you, the hardest thing about public speaking is when you try and persuade other people to what you want to do. And obviously, you were very effective with whatever you did at the school and the videos that you produced. So I would just say you're on a roll, as we say. And keep your momentum and keep your confidence. And thanks to the family, obviously. You can't, she can't do what she's doing unless you're doing all those things. So this is a great thing for all the students participating. Congratulations on your new honor. Now, have you met the New Hampshire governor?
I have.
And is he going to help you with your suggestion? Is he going to propose a law? Actually, the legislature has proposed a law.
What are you going to be doing about that for the law?
Like?
Who are you going to be meeting with?
Melanie.
So she has a chief of staff at St. A's, Melanie Soucy. But she's going to be working with Representative Cle to, and they're going to be meeting at St. A's to do a little workshop with Lola and her executive counselors on how to propose a bill. And then they're going to go from there. So they're actually going to get involved in learning how that works.
Did you know that New Hampshire has the second-largest legislative body in the world? The first one is the House of Commons in England. And New Hampshire has 400 state reps and 24 senators. So you're going to be influencing a lot of people once you get through the process. So good luck with that.
Thank you.
Lola has a business card that she can pass out to you if you wanted to keep track of her, yeah, of her progress on the website.
You have a wonderful mentor in Representative Cle. She's an animal lover. And you cannot do any worse than not having her. She is fantastic. So I bet you met her already, right? Have you met her?
Yeah.
Yeah. She's an animal lover. And her biggest thing is dogs. She absolutely loves them. She have beautiful dogs as well.
Lola's inauguration was in Concord, in the chamber. And Governor Sununu spoke. And Mrs. Sununu, who is on our advisory board to select the kid governor, spoke and actually gave Lola the pin from Governor Sununu's lapel that day, the one that she's wearing now.
Okay. Thank you. And what we'd like to do now is to give Lola a certificate of accomplishment from the Nashua Board of Education. We sincerely congratulate her for being elected as New Hampshire's very first kid governor. And it's signed by our president, Mrs. Raymond, and by our superintendent, Dr. Mosley. Thank you to her teachers also for all you've done to make this possible. Thank you. Okay. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or if you need to leave, that's fine. Okay. Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. The second thing on our agenda is we had a while ago, a parent request for information about teaching American Sign Language as part of the Secondary World Languages Program. So what we have here is, we have asked Mrs. Fitzpatrick, who is the assistant superintendent for secondary, what would be the cost associated with that. So she has put in our packet a proposal, or, well, a proposal, what it would mean to carry that out. So if we were to hire five teachers, one for each of the high schools and one for each of the middle schools, that would be approximately $60,000 times those five positions, excuse me, for $300,000. A conservative estimate of materials would be $3,000 for each of those teachers for a total of about $18,000. The curriculum writing to develop the course would be at a rate of $25 an hour for two levels, one at middle school, one at high school. Approximately 60 hours, that would come up to about $1,500. So it would be an approximate startup cost of $319,500. So while this is an excellent idea and we would love to have American Sign Language as a world language, with the costs associated with this, this committee cannot approve that. So I am going to send this forward to the board president and to our superintendent for discussion and further review. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ohensy?
Thank you. It was very nice to see this proposal. I'm wondering why we would start it with five teachers? Even if we had the money, would there necessarily be that much interest just starting it up? Might we rather start with one teacher full-time and maybe have her go to two different schools or just start it with one school? Or somehow, maybe even a half-time teacher and work our way up? You could get the cost down to $50,000 to $80,000. I mean, if you're going to consider it. I'm not saying we should, but I would definitely not consider it with five full-time teachers.
Well, I think this is a good starting place. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I think it's a good starting place to look at what a full-fledged program would be. And once it's forwarded on, I would imagine that this would be something that would also come up during our budget season. And, you know, in a perfect world, I think this is a great idea. But...
Also, do we have any teachers with this training already? Have we polled our teachers? We could get lucky and might have one or two.
Even if we did, that would, I don't know. Dr. McKinney, do you know that?
We do have some that have ASL backgrounds. Some of them are already assigned to caseloads with students. So if you were to reassign them or increase their workloads, there'd probably be a budgetary impact as well.
They're full-time already?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Working in the special ed department?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. But maybe it would be something that we'd start incrementally, see if there was an interest. I would definitely not think we should put one, a full-time teacher in each of our upper-level schools and just see where it rolls. It just seems to be rather too much all at once.
Right. But at least it gives us some numbers to work off of. I mean, we're starting with the ideal situation. And we can kind of work backwards from there and see how it fits in in our budget process.
How many students do we have in the district that are currently taking it? And do we even have an idea of what kind of interest we have in addition to that?
I can't give you an exact number. It would be very low. I don't think any students, or a low number of students, are taking ASL as a world language. Most of the students who are involved in ASL are getting accommodations or modifications through an individual education plan for special education.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I know, I remember Mr. Guarino actually making a suggestion about CTE in terms of offering this as possibly a CTE-type program. And I honestly don't know, does it take two or three years to learn ASL? I don't know what, you know, what the learning period is. But it might be an interesting opportunity at the high school level where students who are inclined, who might be able to take a program like this, get certified, and then they could actually get work at the end of high school. These interpreters are just as valuable as any other interpreter out there for Spanish or Portuguese. ASL, they need them in courts, they need them medically. So I would just point out that perhaps we should look at the CTE approach to this as well. It might be easier to do at the high school with CTE. You might be able to get a grant, you know, Perkins to support that kind of initiative, which you might not be able to get that in the, you know, the other grades that you're looking at. And the other thing, when you suggested that you bring it forward to the board, typically committees make recommendations to the board.
I didn't say I was bringing it to the board. I said I would forward it to the board president and the superintendent. I don't think that in this committee, we're coming out with a recommendation. I think, I feel that in this committee, you're coming out with some fact-finding. I will follow up with CTE. And I will see if that's an avenue that we can pursue. I don't, I didn't have the intention of making a vote in this committee.
Okay. Just saying, typically, the committees make a recommendation. The board acts. Even if you recommend it to the board, that further investigation is warranted. So in other words, I think you have a little bit more juice if you make a recommendation from the committee than just handing it over. It just may end up on, excuse me, it may end up on Dr. Mosley's list of things to consider and you may never hear about it again. So I'm supportive of something. I don't vote on this committee. But it seems like you have some interest. I just think it'd help you move it forward a little faster.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Our next, is there any other question or comment?
I just have one other thought. I was wondering if we, if there was interest. I mean, this was brought to us by a resident that was interested. Maybe this is something that we could suggest, an ELO, where you have a special ed teacher, a teacher who helps a student with IEP, that could mentor a student to learn this and then maybe somehow develop some kind of program where he teaches a younger class. Somehow, we could in-house develop some type of extended learning opportunity to have a couple of students be the sort of ambassadors of this, you know, language within our district.
Okay. Mrs. Timmons?
Ms. Porter is chair of the committee. If you want to bring it forward to the president of the board, Dr. Mosley, then very well do so.
And I will also include this in my update to the full board when I report on what we discussed in the committee. This will be part of the update.
Very good.
Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is cursive. So what I've been trying to do in this committee is to kind of look at the things that have come up in the past and kind of go through them. So sign language was one of the issues, one of the items that had come up. We also had some interesting cursive instruction in the elementary schools. So, Dr. McKinney, would you like to take over and introduce?
So I'd like to welcome our two ELA elementary curriculum specialists, Erin Anderson, who's a half-time curriculum specialist and half-time assistant principal at Sunset Heights, and Abby St. Pierre, who's a half-time assistant principal at Amherst Street School and ELA curriculum specialist as well.
So I don't really know the context around the cursive. The thing that Erin and I, from the curriculum point of view, from the ELA district, is that currently, it's not embedded as a requirement for a grade level to teach cursive because it's not a state standard at this point.
So I guess what we were hoping, it's not a state standard. There are teachers at different levels who are teaching. Can you maybe talk to what is currently happening with cursive instruction? If anything?
So for consistency, there is not a consistent curriculum right now for cursive writing. There are some teachers, like you said, that might be teaching it here and there. But right now, it's not currently embedded in our curriculum.
Okay. Is this something that teachers are saying that they would like to have be a part of their curriculum?
So from, we have never, we have never surveyed teachers or I can only speak to as an assistant principal from my building and more of a district-wide. We're more like coaching in buildings and not soliciting, really asking teachers about cursive. But to the best of my knowledge, no one has ever come to us and asked if cursive writing could be, could be part of the curriculum at this point. It's also not on our elementary report card.
Right. If it were to become part of the curriculum or part of what was instructed, what would be involved in that in getting a cursive program going?
You'd be looking at an investment in, out of the curriculum budget, in materials, consistent materials, and a progression of skills in a scope and sequence through K, through 5, ongoing professional development and support. And I think the challenge would always be time during the course of the day that teachers have an extended literacy block, devoted time for math, science, social studies, as well as intervention time. So it would be fitting one more piece into a very tight puzzle.
So we've had a lot of interest in this. And this is why we're bringing it up. In your professional opinion, are the children, is instruction hampered in any way because they're not having formal cursive instruction?
So for the past two years, we've been invested in Lucy Cawkins' units of study of writing. So we're invested in the production of quality writing, not necessarily cursive or the manufactured print of that. But we're looking for kids to develop their ideas, come up with a solid-made argument, being able to argue a point of view and have supporting details. The teachers have done a nice job for the last two years investing in a considerable amount of time and effort into the Lucy Cawkins program.
So it is my personal opinion, which I guess I get to share, that it's more important, the conceptual piece of writing rather than the mechanical part. That's my, that's my opinion. And, you know, if we had time and teachers who want to teach cursive, I think that's great. I don't personally think it's critical to developing good writers. But I know that it has come up and we've had a lot of interest. And this is the curriculum committee. So I thought that it was appropriate to bring it up and to have the people who are doing the work, you know, maybe give some of their insight on, in the scope of important things. I don't think that this rises to the top.
We would agree.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So to the committee now, Ms. Ohensy.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we add cursive as a district standard. If I get a second, I'd like to talk to, speak to my motion. No second. Well, I think it's for two reasons. And doesn't, I mean, putting it, it's not a state standard. We can always add it as a district standard. There's no problem with that. We could start initially in making sure that children know how to write their name in cursive. They're going to have to write their name on a check at some point. So if that could be the only standard we start with and then incrementally, we put it up to where we can read cursive. Because if you get a document that's older, you want to be able to decipher it. And maybe incrementally, as we find time or the interest, we could, you know, ratchet up incrementally to put maybe 20 minutes a day, a couple of times a week in there for a couple of grades to get that skill. Because I think it's more than just decoding and writing checks. I know you can just put an X and you could probably print your name. It's quite, it's not quite as good. But I think it's the, it's the coordination between your hand and doing those letters. It develops a certain part of your brain, like printing. But I just think it's developmentally important for children. It's not that they, they're going to, you know, fail if they don't. But it adds something. It's like art adds something, music adds something. It's definitely something that would enhance the development of our children. And I don't see it. Most teachers can write. And if they have a template in the classroom, there's not a lot of training to do on a basic level to teach the children how to write their name. do on a basic level to teach the children how to write their name in cursive. So, I mean, to do just the basics and maybe later incrementally move up, I don't think it would be a big imposition on our curriculum. It might even be a novelty that would get their interest, because you could send them home with projects if they wanted to, like you have italicized print. You could do different fonts and they could write, or take a poem, a small poem, and write it in this cursive or in a different font. And it's another way, it's like art, it's another way to develop their intellect.
I know of art teachers who do that. I know that there's a project that they used to do where they would write their, their name in cursive and they would fold it and it would be like a mirror image. I mean, I've seen that done in art. I know that when I was a teacher, I did teach kids how to write their name in cursive and I had a cursive alphabet on their desk. A lot of times we would do final copy in cursive. So I think that there are teachers who are doing that in a lot of informal ways. So I would never say that cursive is not being taught. I think the issue here is making it mandatory on a day that is very full of a lot of, a lot of curriculum requirements that we have. So I'm not saying I'm against cursive. I think cursive is beautiful. I think that we just have to make our priorities and I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I, I don't think that I would feel comfortable requiring teachers to do this. And I think that that seems to be the consensus from our professionals. Do you have anything?
Yes, I want to speak with the kids. This conversation came on Thanksgiving where we get together and I asked my grandkids, which I have quite a few of them, and they all between middle and high school, and asked them that question, do you want to write in cursive? They said, why? I said, because I write you notes all the time in cursive. I want to know if you're able to read it. They said, we read every one of your notes. And we do write our names in, in, in cursive. So, and then they argued a point, it wasn't necessary. They convinced me it was not necessary, because I thought, well, it was necessary. I mean, it did come up and when they, they were pretty compelling and I guess they're pretty smart kids. I got one that's going right now to MBK Rising with Obama for the next four days and I got one at BU, I got them all over the place. So they, and they was not raised with the way I was writing, but they were able to read every single thing that I write. They don't write, they don't read in cursive, they just don't. And they don't see the value of it. Even though I told them the value, they just said, okay, we can still read it. I can read it. They may not be able to write it, but they can read it. And they are signing their names. So I, they convinced me that it was not that critical. So I believe them.
Ms. Ohensie.
Thank you. If I change my motion to move that we add cursive as a district standard just for writing our name and being able to read as in decipher cursive, like your grandchildren do, would that be acceptable? It's a very minimal level, so they could do as well as your grandchildren do.
I think because they are doing well is because of the way the teachers are teaching now. So I couldn't go along with you on that. They're doing fine. I don't want anything to change.
I think that those are two separate things. I, I disagree a little bit that it's, you know, learning to read it, I think, I think that's not as straightforward as, you know, it's easy to measure if a kid can write their I think those are two things to include in one that I would be uncomfortable with. I have to think on that some more. Ms. Ohensie.
If you look at it as workforce training, if they go out to a workplace and they get a memo that's in cursive and they can't read it and they have to go to their boss and say, please decipher it for me, or please only send me print, that doesn't look so good. It's just, now, they could do the reading in cursive as part of their reading. Maybe once a week they would have something in italics or something in cursive. They could incrementally learn to read that. Just two simple things. So the children, we know that are graduating our district, have those two basic skills, those two competencies. They can write their name, they can sign their name on a legal document, and they can decipher cursive, just as Ms. Timmons' grandchildren can.
Mr., Dr. McKinney.
I'm here as an administrator, but I'm also a parent. So myself, I stopped writing in cursive when I was in eighth grade, but my father taught me how to sign my name and have a signature that had character. And I did the same with my children. So if there are other parents that are concerned about cursive instruction, I ask that they contact the building principal and we can make arrangements for exposure. But I have a hard time believing in the year 2019 that when I read materials about the list of traits and qualities and skills that employers are looking for, I haven't yet to see cursive on that list. So of all the things that we're asking our teachers to do with the limited time and resources, I'd ask for some understanding of the, all the other needs from their wellbeing, physical, academic, and emotional needs that we meet during the course of the day, along with the partnership that we have with our parents and school community. Thank you.
I also think that if we're teaching kids who are currently in kindergarten, first and second grade, by the time they hit the workforce, I think it's impossible to predict that cursive will, we don't know that it will have a prominent place. And I think the way that things develop, I'm not sure that it will. Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. So I'm concerned about the inconsistency where we have some schools doing it and some schools are not doing it. That's a concern, right? Children across the district should be receiving the same instruction within that grade level. I'm not going to say it has to be the same week or any, I'm not going anywhere near that. But I'm saying whatever gets covered in third grade should consistently occur for that third grade across the district. I can appreciate your point where you don't think that a signature is important, but his start-
I did not say that.
Excuse me, you didn't think it was important in the workplace? You essentially said that.
I didn't say, I said it's impossible to predict a kindergartner today, when they hit the workforce, what the importance of cursive is going to be.
So if I may continue, my, my issue about it is, and maybe it's just a historical thing, is there was a time when if you didn't know how to read and write, you didn't know how to write your name. And when you wrote a contract, you used an X. And that was the symbol of your literacy. And for me, literacy includes the signature. So I can appreciate all the concerns and I'm going to call them excuses for why you don't have time to put it in the curriculum.
Mr. Kaufman, please be-
Excuse me, please don't interrupt. Let me finish.
Please be respectful.
I am very respectful.
No, you're saying that they're using excuses. That's not respectful.
I did say that and I meant it. So please let me say it. I have a First Amendment right to speak.
Oh, my goodness.
So please don't interrupt. It's all I'm asking.
Finish quickly, please.
Oh, I'll be as fast as I can. I don't want to go too fast for you to see, can't understand. My point is this, children should know how to write their signature. That's part of their identity. That, for me, is what a public school should include. And excluding it intentionally, excluding it, maybe some teachers can fit it in and others can't, I think you're doing our kids a disservice. And that's my point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kaufman? Sorry, I just wanted to explain one thing. We're not, we're not excluding it because we have an opinion on cursive. We, it's not currently in the curriculum because our curriculum is based on state standards at this point.
Ms. Ohensie.
Thank you. If I would change to add a district standard, I would recommend it be second and third grade, not kindergarten. You first learn to print, you get your head around reading, and then, we did cursive when I went to school, so it wouldn't be in those early grades.
So are you making a motion?
I got no second, which usually a committee would say, just for the, you know, sake of conversation or to get a vote, but I wasn't given that courtesy, so there can be no vote.
Okay. All right. Moving on.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a elementary literacy pilot update. And we have in our packet a copy of the presentation. Thank you.
So we've been asked to give everyone a, a ELA pilot. We have been piloting balanced literacy resources this year from kindergarten through fifth grade. But we thought to be able to give you an update, we kind of had to give you a little bit of background on kind of where we've been and where, where we're going. So I know most of you here know about the lifelong literacy initiative that began in 2013. And that was really setting up a structure for readers workshop. We, we can, we did summer trainings and then year-long cohorts. And we did that from 2013 to 2017. And the goals were that classroom teachers would have a readers workshop set up in their classroom, that in K through three about, that they could also choose the daily five structure that is also a readers workshop. That the understanding of a balanced literacy approach would come out of this training, developing a lifelong love of reading, strategies to be able to do that within the classroom, and building reading stamina through independent reading and having students reading in just write books. So that was the first step in setting, setting up a structure through this lifelong literacy. We then needed to bring in an assessment that supported workshop model. So I'm sure some of you have heard of it as the BASS. It's a benchmark assessment from Fountas and Penel. And it's an assessment that is one-on-one with students, kindergarten through fifth. And we started PD and some individual coaching with the reading specialists in 2005. And that individual PD support is still being given within the buildings by the reading specialists. This assessment, it is, quantifies reading behaviors needed to teach early reading. It also shows word solving strategies that students are using within, beyond, and about the text comprehension, and also students fluency. And the assessment provides an instructional reading level, which we would use in the classroom for guided reading, and then an independent reading level to support the independent reading in the classroom. We also, one intervention that we have at the elementary level is called LLI. And the benchmark assessment also supports the intervention.
It's important to note that the benchmark assesses both fiction and nonfiction text.
Thank you. We also, so after lifelong literacy and the benchmark assessment, we've really been working hard in a, with a writer's workshop. So from 2015 to 2018, we've had three summer institutes from Columbia's Teacher College. And they were four full-day trainings in writer's workshop and using the units of study from the people that developed the units of study. And from 2017 to the present, every elementary school teacher received the writing units of study. And they have been working in teams, really dissecting the units of study and planning together using different planning protocols. And going ahead to the, we've really worked on the tier one instruction and the mini lessons. And, and we have been doing work around writing conferences, but that in February 2020, our hope is to bring Teachers College back to do some writing conference training also with all elementary teachers. So in elementary schools right now, we have a readers workshop structure through our lifelong literacy. We have assessments that support a balanced literacy approach, and we have a writer's workshop up and going using the units of study. Now, we need resources to support our structure and our balanced literacy approach. So we need resources for reading mini lessons, for guided reading, for our word study block, and independent reading.
So the first step in this process was working with the reading specialists who have a really good understanding of all the things that Abby just spoke about, and developing rubrics for what we were looking for as a district and as teachers in these materials. And we did this over a series of meetings with the reading specialists where we brainstormed and then created rubrics for each of the areas, for mini lessons, guided reading, word study, and then online independent reading resources that we were looking at. We used other district exemplars and other things that we could find. Some publishers had sent us some drafts. We drafted the rubrics and then brought them back to the reading specialist for feedback, revised them from there. And then we brought the rubrics to the ELA steering committee and again revised based on the feedback of that committee. And then the rubrics were made into Google Forms where we are asking pilot teachers to fill them out monthly based on the materials that they're using. And we'll be able to really break down the feedback from each of the pilot teachers on each of the resources through that. And then we will utilize the input from the pilot teachers and that feedback with the selection committee. We will also ask the selection committee to complete the same rubric after they've had a presentation. That data will be kept separate to not interfere with the teacher feedback and we'll be able to then kind of see the, the feedback side by side. After the development of the rubrics, we asked, we sent out a application to teachers across the district, kindergarten through fifth grade, looking for teachers who are interested in trying something new in their balanced literacy time. And then the selection was based on trying to get as much representation as we could across the 12 elementary schools and making sure that each, you know, teacher that wanted to participate had an opportunity and also that each school was represented as equally as possible. We have all year, this school year, have been having after-school meetings to collaborate, utilize this professional development, but it's really great when educators get together and have authentic conversations around things. And they've been doing that for the extent of this school year with these materials. And then also they've been filling out the monthly rubrics. We have assembled the selection committee and again sent out an application looking for interest of those people interested, again, looking for representation from all 12 elementary schools, so that, you know, all of our schools' voices were represented in that committee, different grades. We wanted equal representation from our Title I schools and our non-Title I schools. And also it's important that, to note that pilot teachers have not been asked to participate in this election, because we know when you invest so much time into something that you do create a bias. So we want to make sure that that's not, you know, muddied in the process. We'll be utilizing their feedback as part of the selection process from those monthly rubrics. And then we will meet as a selection committee for three days. The first two days will be presentations from the publishers. They have the rubrics so they know what the teachers have been looking for and what we've been looking for as a district. And then the recommendation will be made on the third day where we'll look at all of the feedback from teachers and the selection committee. Like I said, the selection process will be made up of that committee. Day one will, and two will be presentations from publishers on all resources. Day three, we'll review pilot teacher feedback and hopefully end the day with a recommendation in each of the four areas that we had discussed. From there, we're hoping to be able to create, as a district and a team, a curriculum team, a three-year implementation plan based on the materials that have been selected. And this plan will include professional development for teachers in each of those areas. And that's all we have.
Thank you. I've participated in many pilot programs. I know how this works and it's a very thorough process. And thank you for all the work that you've put into doing this, all for the good of the kids. So thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ohensie?
Can this committee see some of the materials? It would be very interesting to see the, the materials. Usually we had our committee meetings at central office, so it wasn't a big deal to drag the materials in. We did that when we did the elementary math and we had three different publishers that we were looking at at that time. Also, I'd make a recommendation that you- Also, I'd make a recommendation that you invite a board member so that someone from the committee or someone from the board has firsthand knowledge based on those presentations. And that also, we did when we did the elementary math programs for the pilot.
That's what I'm doing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But you are attending-
I'm the board member. That came up at a full board member, a full board meeting, and I was the only one who volunteered, so.
Good to know that somebody's there.
Yes.
But can we, as committee members, see some of the materials maybe at our next meeting? Doesn't have to be on the agenda, but just to look through them to get, I mean, this is a great update, but it's rather abstract. It would be nice to see the materials.
Are you asking for the different, the three that are being piloted or once the decision is made?
Well, before.
Before? Okay, I just want to clarify.
So that we could, you know, look at them and get some ideas, then we get the feedback. But sometimes it's hard to get the feedback and the materials all at once because you've got to digest it, you know, the, one step at a time.
Okay, I'll make a note.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Ms. Timmons?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for doing this pilot. However, I was so busy, I'm so busy, I couldn't really volunteer to do this because that would really send me into orbit, you know? So I'm glad that Susan stepped up to the plate and volunteered. It was put, sent out to the board and I, I guess you're the only one that said, "I do," so.
No, I'm happy to do it. I don't mean to make it sound that way.
Right, I know.
I'm just like, I'm happy to do that, I've done it before. It's awesome, yeah.
Yes, it's a big deal. And it's just that I was kind of disappointed that others didn't do it, but I know how busy people's schedules are. So, but I'm very happy this pilot's taking place. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think it's important to note the hard work that the teachers who have participated in the pilot have put in. We had an overwhelming response from teachers looking for materials and really interested in this, and the participation has been amazing. And I think that that's really important to note, that the teachers who are out there with the kids are really excited about this as well, so.
It's a great learning experience for teachers, even if the thing that you piloted is not the one that's ultimately chosen. It's a really valuable exercise to go through.
I just want you to know that we do appreciate that and we appreciate everything that you teachers do and it can't be easy. So, thank you again.
Okay, Ms. Ohensy, do you have anything else before? Okay. Mr. Kaufman.
Thanks. I was going to say thank you for the detailed plan and attempt to explain things to us. And so that's just part of the acknowledgement, I just want to say. I do have two questions, so. You have a slide there that starts with the word "now." It's probably maybe four or six slides in. So, are you asking for something? Is it in the budget? How much money? Is it going to be presented this week? Do you want to preview it now?
Yes, there's money allocated in the budget and I'll be back here, same place, different time, on Wednesday to talk about that.
Okay. The other question I have, when you spoke of, once the pilot is determined and you've made a decision how you want to move forward, is the intent that this implementation is going to be district-wide? I mean, obviously you've reached, you've spread, you've put out the biggest tent you can for inclusion, but I just want to understand if your intent is to cover all 12 schools?
The intention would be for the materials to be in our kindergarten through fifth grade classrooms in all 12 elementary schools.
Okay, so we'd have consistent curriculum across the district?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. It's really nice to see both of you. Thank you. Okay. And the last thing that we have on the agenda is more of an informational piece. Dr. McKinney and I were talking about updates in the curriculum and this is something that comes out at the end of each month. And it will be expanded to include grades K through eight. So this will just be a regular insert in the curriculum meeting packet each month. Do you have anything to add to that, Dr. McKinney?
No, but I did have another idea. Maybe a month or two, we can make this K-12 if that's okay.
Yes. Did I say K-8? Okay.
Well, we did, but I'd like to include the high schools as well.
I think that would be great. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Timmons.
Yes, thank you, Dr. McKinney. But the colorful of this curriculum, Chronicle, it drew me into reading it. So it was colorful, it was nice, it was well-done. And I said, "Wow, Dr. McKinney is doing great things over there at District Office." So, thank you very much. This is a lot of work and I really appreciate it. And keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Also, thank you to the curriculum team. You met two of them here tonight, but all the curriculum coaches do a nice job and really go out of their way to help and support our teachers.
So, what about you?
We share it in together. There's no I in team.
Okay.
You're good.
Thank you.
Ms. Ohensy.
I just wanted to understand some of the abbreviations in this chart on the last page. What do F, W, and S individually stand for? And do we have math assessments also or just ELA assessments?
On that page, the top half is titled Math Data Collection Plan and FWS is Fall/Winter/Spring.
Oh.
And the second half is labeled ELA Assessments and lists the ELA assessments for kindergarten through fifth grade.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Oh, no, sorry. Yeah, sure, sorry.
It's okay.
I just want to say thank you to all the principals, all the curriculum team members, K through 12. We had PD today on the In Service Day for 1,000 teachers, Middle School Institute, a number of different things that cover everything from pre-K to 12 and all the content areas. So I just want to thank everybody who was involved. LeAnn and Carmen from the District Office, the Special Occasion Office, ELL. It was a complete team effort.
Thank you for not letting me forget that. Thank you. Sure. Yep.
Look, it's the cheer.
Yep, sure.
It's the cheer over here.
Come on up.
All right.
My name is Luann Janest. I live at 20 Shower Drive and I teach fifth grade at Sunset Heights. I just wanted to, after listening to the conversations about cursive and the presentation about lifelong literacy, and I am piloting one of the programs this year, I just wanted to give you an idea about what my language arts block looks like. So in fifth grade, I have 24 students reading from kindergarten to eighth grade level. I'm happy to say that we're not really at kindergarten anymore. When I did the I-Ready tests, some of the kids have made two and three-year growth. In that literacy block, I do have support from a special ed teacher who will take, who will come in and support the kids who with a specific program for their needs. But I'm also working to support the other kids in the class at their level. And in doing that, I am also three times a year giving them an individual reading assessment, those are the VAS kids they were talking about. I cannot possibly find any time to teach cursive. I do teach my students how to sign their name as part of our mini society because they have checks to sign, they have identification things to sign. But a formal program where I am going to ask them to learn how to write in cursive and read in cursive takes more than 20 minutes, especially the reading part. When you're talking about students who come to us needing the basic skills of learning how to read, and I know the goal is to get them on grade level and we're doing everything that we can to do that, but when students come to us so far behind, coming in at kindergarten, not even being able to sit in a circle, know how to know any letters at all, playing catch-up is really difficult. And I don't think I'm making excuses. And when somebody, when you said that, I just want you to know I was highly offended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Janest.
So was I.
Okay, a motion to adjourn?
I second it.
Second? Okay.